Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to call the Thursday, May 10, 2018, special meeting of the Public Works Session to order. And at this time, would you please stand for a moment of silence? Afterwards, our pledge allegiance will be done by Ms. Allen. Amen. Ms. Allen?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated at this time. Ms. Allen, would you please read the mission statement, please?
The mission of the Portsmouth Public School Division is to engage all students in learning that will foster academic excellence and responsible citizenship.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next item is attendance. Ms. Stewart, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen?
Present.
Ms. Atkinson? Reverend Fleming?
Present.
Ms. Hines?
Present.
Mr. Lamb?
Present.
Reverend Patillo?
Present.
Dr. Whitaker? Mrs. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Perrin?
Here.
Thank you.
Seven members present, two members absent.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Board members, I'd like to make a recommendation that we move item 3.6, which is the discussion of the 2018-19 school board budget, right before we go into closed session.
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion's been made, and second. Do we have any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Do we have families that are waiting for scheduled times?
I don't think this is going to take--
Okay.
Is this going to go to preliminary information?
Thank you.
Hearing no discussion other than that. Madam Court, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson? She's not here. Reverend Fleming?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Okay. At this time, Dr. Bracy has a presentation that he would like to make concerning the 2018-19 school--
And Dean is setting this--
Do you want to use that?
Yes, sir. We're almost there. So what I want to do this evening is to go over the revised proposal now that council has approved their budget. As you know, we started this process with a long list of needs, and we will go down to make a reasonable request, we thought. However, with not enough city funding, we're not going to be able to accomplish all that we had hoped. So therefore, this is a revised plan that aims to give us a raise, address school safety, and accomplish board initiatives. While the city did not fully fund our request from looking at this, I do want to point out that they are giving us an additional $400,000 for nine security officers. Since we do not have full funding, I'm presenting the revised proposal for your consideration. Regarding the raise, I strongly believe our teachers need a raise in order for us to be able to retain and attract staff. On the topic of school safety, if you recall, we wanted additional officers at the high and the middle schools, and at least one officer at each elementary school. Due to the lack of the city funding, we're not able to provide extra officers to middle and high schools. However, I do believe officers are still needed at our elementary level. So with the city giving us nine, the school system will be paying for four, so that way, all of our elementary schools will have coverage from the security officers. Related to school safety, also is the Director of Auxiliary Services. This position was recommended initially by our staffing study because currently, the HR director handles operational needs, both the critical jobs and deserve focused attention. Also, this position is more important now with school safety issues that we face. This position will also help us manage and coordinate all school security officers, as well as monitor safety issues. As you know, our buildings are aging. While we have multiple maintenance projects, we need the attention and oversight. This person also would manage transportation, which is faced with various challenges. Onto the instructional assistants. We have-- these are 11 IAs that will address the board's goal to put an assistant in each class. And finally, we want to expand our CTE program with an addition of a pharmacy technician course.
Dr. Bracy, some people are writing-- you already have a handout. You already have a handout.
Sure. This is emailed to you in your--
Oh, okay.
Board docs.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Sure. So, next slide. Reductions. In order to pay for the revised proposal, we need to cut an additional $733,000. If you recall, we had already cut and repurposed about $1 million, and we're expecting a revenue increase of about $600,000 from sales tax. So that will be four instructional vacancies. We have one repurposed vacancy, and we have a 1% cut in our non-payroll budget, which includes travel, conferences, as well as convocation. So what we'll do, we'll have to do more of the PD internally. Question?
Questions? Board members? So basically, what you're saying to us this evening is that although the city did not appropriate the $1.9 million for the teacher raises, we-- you have gone, you and your staff have worked to reduce the budget so that our teachers will receive a 2% increase?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Lamb?
Just a couple real quick questions here. The Director of Auxiliary Position--
Yes.
--is going to be sharing some of the responsibilities of transportation facilities and school safety. And you had just mentioned that we still have some--
Transportation--
Issues, hiccups. I guess is the thing to say with that. With regards to those hiccups, does this mean that-- is there going to be any alignment or looking at doing more efficient things within the Transportation Department? Or are we still going to have the same positions that's there? And this is just going to add one more position over that? Or not?
What this will do is you will have one dedicated person that will oversee all of those areas on a daily basis. Currently, Mr. Ziegler is that person that they report to, that he oversees, but he's also doing that along with HR. So the attention that's needed for those areas, particularly the transportation, which we've talked about in the past, and now with the possibility of a new school being built, the oversight that is going to have to be needed there with the security officers, the addition of those, we need to have someone that they're reporting to because they need oversight from the central level, as well as the school level, as for the training that they receive as well. So this person will not, I think, as you mentioned, be doing some of the same day-to-day operations as this person. This person more so will oversee those activities, making sure that they're taking place. As far as what's happening now, will it look the same? Well, with the new person just coming in that's focusing on that, one of the things that they will do is evaluate how everything has been operating and make recommendations of how we need to change or revamp the way we're doing business.
Okay. So there will be no changes as far as positions within transportation in and of itself? This is just going to be one more layer of responsibility with that, is what you're saying?
What I'm saying, this is another layer that we'll be working within. Now, as far as changes, no. You'll still have the same--
That's what I meant. There's still-- Yeah, there's still the Director over and--
Right.
And what's down there right now. This will just be-- Okay. And then, the four instructional vacancies--
Can you bring it back?
Yeah, there are four instructional vacancies, the reductions in that. What, when we say instructional vacancies, what exactly does that encompass? Are we just saying classroom teachers? Are we saying--
Yeah, vacant classroom teachers.
Okay. So we were at, at one time, a couple months ago, when I asked a question about-- we were already short 78-- or I'm sorry, 38 teachers. So we're just going to, I guess, just cut four of that? Or--
These are-- Two of these are foreign language teachers. So we've been without them this year because, one, we haven't been able to find them. Principals have made recommendations where teachers are given a plan and actually teaching additional courses as well. We also have the Virtual Virginia as an option as well if we need additional courses for them to take also. So although the teachers that we've been trying to hire, but that we couldn't find, there's kids that need these courses are still getting them. So this is a way that we can remove it and still provide those services, just in a different delivery.
And then the other two?
The other two is we are repurposing Family Consumer Science with the Pharmacy Tech position. And then, there was a Speech Pathologist position that was there. That position, no services will be lost because what we already have--
Contracted services.
--contracted services agreement. So those additional services that are needed can be picked up from that area.
Okay. And then, the last question that I have is the Pharmaceutical Tech position. Obviously, that's the beginning of the first for us to be able to offer that--
Yes.
--as a certification. My question to that is, that is one teacher, one position. As far as for a student, if they wanted to go through the program in and of itself, it's not just one course, obviously.
No.
So for this, this is starting at the ground level, correct? So this would be the first of probably many that we would have to hire in the future?
With additional teachers?
Yeah. Well, whatever it is that we would have to make it an option of to have a Pharmacy Tech program.
Yeah. Depending on the number of students that we have that are interested in it, whether it's because with one teacher, of course, they're going to be teaching the introductory part of it. Then, as that grows, and we have additional students that want to come in and take the course, then you could have one teacher focusing on the beginning phase, and the other teacher can be picking up the additional level. I think what we have in place is a partnership where the internship piece of this will be phased out into the community. They'll go outside to get those opportunities, the clinician part of it. They'll go outside of the school division for that. But we want to provide the coursework here.
And the Director of Auxiliary is, if I remember correctly, somewhere in the ballpark of 82,000? 83?
Yeah, somewhere around that.
Approximate.
Approximately, yes.
And there's no other options with regards to-- could we not-- are we saying that this position with those responsibilities is something that-- I understand the facility-- no, not facility, I'm sorry.
Staffing.
Staffing study. Did call for that, but the staffing study also called for possibly, if, could, or need be, where you would take those responsibilities and try to divvy them out or to give them access across? Is that-- do we not have the staff to be able to do that? Or have we looked at that?
Divvy out the--
Well, like, for example, and I'm just using as an example, Dr. Cromarty Hill, the Chief of Schools. Is there a way to take some of these responsibilities right here? Since a lot of these are on Mr. Ziegler, is there a way that we could take some of these responsibilities and say, divide them even more among current staff?
I don't see that as being an option because what that will do, we will start heading down that road of adding those additional responsibilities to others that already have an intense course workload themselves. So I wouldn't recommend that.
And so, we're still short 38 teachers?
Well, we can't find 38 teachers.
Right. But I mean, I'm just saying, but as far as on the role--
As far as being able to hire, yes. We have vacant positions. Right. And those, I'm not saying we're cutting.
Right.
We're still trying to find those.
Right.
Yes.
Finished? Ms. Williams?
Yes.
You had your hand, and then Ms. Allen?
Thank you, Chairman Perrin. As far as the Director of Auxiliary Position for Operations, I think that is critical. There are just so many issues there that we constantly hear about. And I think someone needs to come in and do a complete overhaul of that department. And personally, there's probably no one in there right now that would take on the additional duties to get it where it should be because there are many, many issues. I get lots of emails that I share with Dr. Bracy about that. So-- And it's all-- Operations is one of the biggest departments in the school system. And it has been a lot to me-- I've said this earlier-- for Mr. Ziegler to try to do HR and that. And I think he's done a wonderful job doing the very best that he could. So I am in favor of that. And I think that's critical to get it on an even footing where the employees feel like they're being heard and something is being done. And I want to commend Dr. Bracy and his team for going back because this board has said that we were going to find the money. We've had to eliminate or cut some positions. And I think this is the second year we've had to do that. But it's critical because we can't afford to lose our teachers. And hopefully, maybe sooner than later, that we will get a city council that favors some progress in the schools.
Thank you.
I want to thank you for that.
Ms. Allen?
With the Director of Auxiliary Services position with the new school, will they function as the quasi-project manager over that project?
They will be the yes and no. And let me explain. Currently, the city-- we've been in conversation with them-- we're still planning on using MBCon. And in their role, they're going to function as well as the construction site manager. But our liaison will be the operations auxiliary services person to help make those decisions that they have. They will manage the project to make sure that everything is in place with the architect, the general contractor. They will monitor that side of us. The input that's needed from us, they will contact-- they will be in contact with that person to answer all questions that they may have on our behalf.
And I just wanted to say hallelujah because we've been trying for like five, six years to get those additional kindergarten IAs. We asked for 15, and we got-- we could be able to do 11, five from the operating budget, and six from Title I. So-- because I was in one of the schools last week, and there was one kindergarten TA on that hallway. And that is just-- I mean, she was just running from one place to the other. That's just unheard of. And I am so glad. And I am glad that we're going to be able to give the teachers a much deserved-- all staff, a much deserved pay raise. So, Ms. Hines?
Thank you, Chair. It was almost like you gave me a perfect segue. 11 kindergarten IAs is a long way from two and three from what we've done in previous years.
Right. But it's a start.
It's a start.
It's a start.
And I'm going to say that kindergarten is where we lay the foundation for school and where we lay the foundation for education. Kindergarten is where we can fill in some gaps so that they don't become huge crevices as they move up through the ranks.
Right.
I believe in CTE, and I want to see CTE in here. So I say this with some weighed conversation. The CTE Pharmacy Tech, I would almost be willing to put on hold and put that money into kindergarten IAs and up the number of kindergarten IAs. And the reason I say that is this. We laid out several new CTE courses last year where we had to put some funding, and we had to find teachers, and we've had to do that. I would almost rather see a report of how we're doing in CTE and where else we need to go. I would almost rather wait a few-- wait another year to see what our projections are for those classes. And I would rather hedge my bets on kindergarten IAs at this moment than adding a new CTE course for us. That's just my personal opinion.
Before we go to-- and I understand, Ms. Hines, where you're going with that. But, you know, I think we have heard multiple times and loud and clear from the public, from students even, from Mr. Robinson-- Robinson, where how critical and how important CTE certifications are. I guess my question is, with this pharmaceutical tech, and it's not a bad option, I mean, by any stretch of the word, but I guess, how are we arriving at deciding what offerings in CTE or VOTAC? How are we arriving at what we're choosing to offer? How did we arrive at, to go at the pharmacy part?
We had a discussion about that last year.
Right. Exactly.
I actually suggested the Pharmacy Tech.
Yeah, you did. Right. And that's fine. And I know we had that discussion. But I guess what I'm saying is, how are we arriving at it? Are we doing data? Are we doing research? Are we seeing that this is an area that is needed in Hampton Roads area? I mean, how are we coming up with that outside of just discussion?
Well, before we added the courses last-- was it last year, the year before, the four new courses?
Mm-hmm. We did a student survey.
We did a survey. That's how we came up with those courses. So those courses have been put in. The equipment and all of those have-- now are in place. And I think you said you're asking for a report on that. I mean, that's something that we can do. And then Pharmacy Tech came up as well, as Ms. Allen said, as another course that would be a benefit to our students. So that's why we did the research and waiting for approval so Mr. Hill can get the ball rolling to get approval for it. So once the board approves it, then he can make the request to the state in order to get approval on their end. It'll be a short-- it's a short turnaround time, but hopefully, that we will be able to get that--
Right.
--if that board desires.
Correct. And you just said that we did the research on it. So I'm hearing then that the research was the student surveys?
Yes.
The Bureau of Labor Statistics produced that. Pharmaceutical jobs will expand by 12%--
Right.
--from 2016 to 2026. And that's faster than average. So there is a need nationally, based on these data, that there will be expanded job opportunities for kids who can come out with that certification.
Oh, absolutely. And we just, at the last board meeting, had a discussion and had a presentation. And I think it was also asked, too, if we could start looking at what our curriculums were with regards to-- they had a gentleman from Opportunity, Inc., I think was the name of the organization.
That was tied on the priority.
That looked at the top 10 VOTAC in just flat-out certifications in Hampton Roads. And I do think that myself and some-- a couple of us had asked even if we could even get a report with regards to what our curriculum actually shows for that. So my concern is, you know, we've heard from students, we've heard from the public. We're short teachers. You know, you just look around where we are in Hampton Roads, but specifically here in Portsmouth with the opportunities that we got here. I just don't want to see us start moving down CTE offerings and then stop and then never get back to where we need to be for that. Because I think we have a lot of students that can benefit from this direction. And I think it could be a boost for us, even locally, to develop growth and so forth.
Thank you. Ms. Allen?
And just to piggyback off of the Pharmacy Tech conversation, one of the other caveats about the Pharmacy Tech that we had in our discussion was, it was one of the courses which did not require a great deal of overhead supplies and adding a whole lot into it. And it was one of those courses that-- I personally have taken a Pharmacy Tech course for certification-- that there is a great deal of need for Pharmacy Tech. Especially, we have Portsmouth Naval Hospital that hires Pharmacy Tech. There are several other agencies that hire Pharmacy Techs as well. And that also can be a segue into, down the line, possibly getting registered medication aid certifications through home health agencies. So there's a barometer of things that a Pharmacy Tech position could offer our students. I agree with Board Member Lamb that we shouldn't back down from moving forward with CTE because if you take this one step back, we're going to need to take two or three steps forward to get caught up. So I appreciate the need for the kindergarten IAs. We have made some progress there. So let's not short the progress in career and technical education, which is a need. And let's take these small leaps together.
Any other comments? Oh, Ms. Williams? Sorry.
I just want to say, I agree with Board Member Allen and Lamb that we do have to focus on getting our students career-ready--
Yes.
--when they graduate.
Right.
And if this particular position, and it is a growing need according to Mr. Surveys, and if we can fund that this year, I think we should. Because that is the push--
Right.
--with the state as far as career and tech. And we are still way behind. But I think we need to move forward in that direction as well.
Good. Okay. Oh.
I just-- we have a subcommittee of the Curriculum Committee, and Mrs. Williams serves on that committee. And we focus around CTE and dual enrollment and all of our advanced academics programs. We met on May 30. And what we concluded-- the group now consists of not just school people and board member, but we have individuals from the community. We have Ms. Clifton, who's with our PTA. We're inviting other folks who are stakeholders to come in and have a voice on it. We developed a vision statement at the last minute, a draft. And once it's ready to go, we bring all of this before the board for approval. Because what we realized is that we can't--
what we realized is that we can't move forward with this vision unless we have a statement that guides us and unless we develop a plan for that. So the committee has been charged with a three to five-year plan because what we've done thus far is we've responded to the board's requests for particular courses. But what we realized is that if we're going to achieve a full vocational educational center and a true CTE program, which we do have a very rich program already, it's just that we haven't publicized it and maybe many, many individuals aren't aware of it, but our CTE and dual enrollment programs are extremely rich. But we want to find a way to formalize that so that people have a full understanding of it and gather that data that you're speaking of. So there is a plan in place. We do have a committee and we are meeting to get it organized and to develop, develop a three to five-year plan that is aligned with our strategic plan for the division. And that's typically what would happen. Now going to the, the actual courses themselves, the only hardship that we run into, and we had this discussion this morning, if the classes do not make, now we anticipate that they will, but if the classes do not make, then we can't offer them.
Right.
So we put them in a booklet, we're pushing them through counseling, we're advertising the position. So far our programs are strong, but we also have to make sure that we're offering courses that students will take. So that was the reason for the survey and kind of answers what you were asking.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Bracy. Thank you and your staff. I know that you have, the last couple of days have been working a lot and we've been talking a lot and I am very pleased, I, as one board member, am very pleased with what you've come up with. I'm very pleased.
Yeah, well, I have to thank them and we've got to know each other better in the last couple of days.
I'm sure. Sure. All right. All right. Thank you. Now at this time, Mrs. Williams, if you will. Close session, please.
I move at the board end to a closed meeting on provisions of Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia for the following purposes. One, consideration of a request for religious exemption from school attendance as permitted under subsection 8.2. Two, consideration of a readmission as permitted under subsection 8.2. Three, consideration of two student disciplinary matters as permitted under subsection 8.2. And four, consideration of various personnel matters, including the assignment performance and resignation of specific school employees as permitted under subsection 8.1.
Before the motion read, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Reverend Fleming?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
And Mr. Parent?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
We are now in closed session. Okay.
Oh, no, he's not in his room.
When everybody's. Mrs. Ziegler, I'm so glad that you could join us. In fact, you did.
He didn't go to his room.
We said you took your room.
He said you were going to your room.
I said you'd go. We said you.
She's.
Where everybody else at?
Oh, come on.
Okay. The next item is 3.1. Consideration of a religious exemption, case number 2017-18/05. The recommendation is to approve.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion's been made. And second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Reverend Fleming?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. 3.2 is consideration of a readmission, case number 2017-18/40. The recommendation is to approve readmission.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion's been made. And second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Reverend Fleming?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. 3.3, consideration of expulsion discipline, case number 2017-18/41.
Move for approval.
The recommendation is alternative placement through 2019.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion's been made. And second, do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Reverend Fleming?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
No.
Mr. Lamb?
No.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Mrs. Williams, yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Six yes, two no's.
The next item is of consideration expulsion discipline, case 2017-18/42. The recommendation is alternative placement through 2019.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion's been made. And second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Reverend Fleming?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
No.
Mr. Lamb?
No.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Six yes, two no's.
The next item is 3.5, consideration to approve the revocation of a teacher license, HR 2018-3. The recommendation is no.
Move for approval.
Motion's been made.
Second.
Second.
Can I have clarification?
Yes.
You said the, the motion is for no.
Right.
The motion, you mean to revoke? It would not.
The motion is to, oh, excuse me, consideration to approve the replication of the teacher's license would be that we would not, in other words, we would not revoke her license.
No.
No.
I understood that to be something different.
Recommendation to approve would be to approve the recommendation, which is to revoke.
So, so.
If that's the motion.
Yes means to revoke. Yes means to revoke.
Yes would be a.
And I'll withdraw the motion so we can get the motion correct.
All right. Thank you. The consideration to approve the revocation of a teacher's license.
Move for approval.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Excuse me, that was my fault because hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk.
So can I be clear before we vote?
Yes.
The motion is to approve the revocation.
That is correct.
So if you vote yes, you are voting to revoke. And if you vote no, you are voting to not revoke.
That is correct.
I just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
That is correct.
Okay.
I'm sorry. All right. Madam Clerk.
Ms. Allen?
No.
Ms. Atkinson?
No.
Reverend Fleming?
No.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
No.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
No.
Mr. Parent?
No.
Two yes, six no's.
The motion fails. Motion fails. Come here. Mr. Parent, I'm sorry, can I just address the board if you want to know next steps, what'll happen now with that teacher? So that case will be filed here, it will not go on to the state. Is it's the board's wish that we assist her in getting the documentation to renew her license as you heard tonight.
I think it would be good. Yeah, I think it would be good. I think she feels like.
If she, if she wants.
Is that an open?
That's open. Personnel matter.
I mean, it's, we can assist, she doesn't work for us, so we're under no obligation to assist her anymore. So if, if you want us to assist her, we'll assist her if you want us to.
I would, you don't want to be assisting people who are not employed.
Yeah. I don't know that, I don't know if it's ultra-va, I don't know what the assisting
means. I don't know what that involves, but you, I'm sure there are methods for her to get things done without the school division reaching out for individual cases and doing that. I just don't.
But she may approach us and say, well, since they voted not to revoke my license, will administration sign?
Point of order, Chair. Could we go into closed session to discuss personnel, please?
Yes, we can.
Need a motion?
Got a motion? Just read the last.
I move at the board end to a closed meeting on provisions of Section 2.2-3711 Code of Virginia for the following purposes. Consideration of various personnel matters and suited assignment performance, resignation of specific school employees as permitted under subsection 8.1.
Second.
Motion's been made. And second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk.
All right. Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Reverend Fleming?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
No. No. Absolutely.
But we're in closed.
Can we let staff?
We're now in open session. The next item on the agenda is the agenda review for March, May 24th.
Move for approval.
Second.
Yeah, move for approval, second.
So y'all don't want Dr. Bracy to review?
No, that's all right.
Okay. I got you. It's discussion anyway. Board members' reports, do we have any board members' reports?
Do we need to prove that or just?
On the agenda review?
Oh. It says discussion. All he knows is discuss. I am. He's going to make a comment, then I'm going to make a comment. I guess we can do it, I guess we can do it at this point. I sent you, I have been sending you emails, keeping you up to date with the event that happened on Tuesday evening, dealing with the resolution that we sent for categorical funding. As you well know, that the city council tabled the, that resolution. I'm just going to make a comment that Dr. Bracy's going to address some other stuff. I did reach out to the mayor today. He finally did call me back and I said, I would like to request a meeting with you and Dr. Patton and Dr. Bracy and myself to talk about this. And the, the bottom line is during the discussion, and I, I ask you if you go, if you went to a certain hour, you could hear the discussion. The discussion was that Mayor Rowe asked Dr. Patton to get with the superintendent to find out if all these eight items would be expended through the end of the year. He said, then you heard incorrectly. And I said, well, I, I watched the video three times. What he said was, he said, you remember that I did make that, but it did not have, it was not voted upon. Council tabled it.
Right.
So I said, so when the council tabled it, that meant that, that Dr. Patton did not have to get with the superintendent. So how else are we going to answer these questions? So his recommendation to me was, Mr. Parent, you as the chairman of the school board, you need to call each member of city council and ask the city council and explain those eight items. And I said, well, then we meet on the 22nd, which is the public hearing, we have no opportunity to. So I called Dr. Bracy and I like, let him know what he was saying. Now, I will do whatever you instruct me to do. What I got from him is that you know, Mr. Parent, there were, you had four votes against, four votes to table. Because the bottom line is, and we've talked about this over the years until I, it's that this whole thing with encumbered versus unencumbered. You have a purchase order that's encumbered and you send it to the vendor and so if you do not receive it by June 30th, this is their definition, this is the, they read the code, the definition of encumbered funds. Anything that has not been spent, in other words, Mr. Parent, can you ensure the city council that all of the items, these eight items that are listed, that they're going to be received and paid by June 30th? Well, I can't ensure anything. So I'm going to let Dr. Bracy pick up the ball from, from there and then I'm going to ask you later, what does the board want me to do, Dr. Bracy?
Okay. And what I did so that I could stay focused and not deviate from the many conversations that we've had about this is just wrote, wrote something down so that I could stick to the, to the key points. On Tuesday, the city council tabled a vote on our categorical adjustment. I'm worried about this because we're getting close to the end of the fiscal year and we have several pressing needs to take care of. Now keep in mind, the budget is a projection. We make estimates on what we believe our expenses will be for the year. However, sometimes we need to make adjustments. For example, we've had a hard winter this year, which drove utility costs higher than expected. This categorical adjustment will accommodate the higher payments we need to make. If it is not possible to see in advance that all energy costs will increase substantially, therefore this categorical adjustment request reflects our plan to cover day-to-day needs of the school division. We made the request weeks ago in April. Had the council acted swiftly on our request, we believe we could have accomplished this plan on schedule.
Yep.
But now the council has delayed the vote. The time clock is ticking and it may be harder to meet deadlines. For example, the fourth quarter storm water bill comes from the city. We don't currently have enough money on our account line to cover it. We're about $27,000 short. That's why we need the council to approve this adjustment. Let me provide another example regarding high school teacher laptops. The IT department worked on this replacement plan for months before presenting it. Had the city approved this May 8th, we would have been able to complete this plan by June 15th. But now because of the city's inaction, the project will be delayed. But I don't want us to get caught up in the city's games. Let's look at a worst-case scenario where we aren't able to execute this plan because of the city's delay. Or let's say the painters take a little bit more time or it takes a little longer to finish the water testing. Why should the city deny this request because of that? The work still needs to get done. Now keep in mind, any money that we don't spend is going back to the city council anyway. And we still have to ask them to reappropriate, reappropriate the money for us. So either way, our needs are still the same. As superintendent, I'm frustrated, we have, we have the money, but the city won't give us permission to spend it. Already the city has sent a clear message that teacher raises are not important to them. So are we now to believe that the conditions of our buildings are not important as well? It is my sincere hope that the city council will approve this at the next meeting. The ball is in their court.
And now you do know that beginning July 1st, we're going to lump sum, in other words, this whole fiasco of categorical funding goes away. And that was a lot, if you watched, there was a lot of discussion because you're talking about 2017, 18, funny, you're not talking about 18, 19. Now, when I talked to the mayor this afternoon, his, his point of view is, Mr. Parent, if you can't ensure to city council that all of these items that you, that the board, that you have had to list, you've listed, that can be, can be spent, invoiced and paid by by June 30th, you'll not have a problem with city council. But you have to remember, this was tabled, and it was tabled indefinitely." So I said, "Mr. Mayor, does that mean that on May the 22nd, that this is not, this will not be..." He said, "If a member of council asks that it be removed and placed on the table, then we can certainly obviously bring it up again." But my suggestion to you is that I'm one, I'm one council member. And what I would suggest to you is that you call each one of the city council members and explain to them that all of these one through eight items that you see, and I can't, and I mean, I can't ensure that all of these things are gonna be encumbered, paid for, and now, if you look at your list, and that's what I wanted to do, if you look at number one, $221,520 for utility costs, it's, it explains, "These are projected to be over the original budget due to increased expenses for cold weather." I don't understand why the council didn't understand that.
Right.
But evidently, they didn't. Number two, $30,000 for pest control services for school buildings. That can be done. I don't, I don't think number three can be done by June...
Can I ask a question about that? Who's doing the painting?
I don't know.
Are our guys doing the painting?
No.
So the, the other thing that's gotta go into this is, is council has to understand, if they wanna paint a building, they shut down a building for three days, bring in the painters and do it. We can't do that. We can't paint when we have friends, you know, and big friends, little friends, it doesn't matter who our friends are. We can't just shut down a building for a week for painting. Our work and our maintenance has to happen in the summer to protect that instructional time that has to happen, September whatever to June whatever that year is. So we don't, I mean, even if we painted for two whole weeks, from, you know, June 14th to June 30th, we're still not insured to get all of that completed. And to do that in a rush job, that money goes from 800, or 80,000 probably to 160,000, just because of the turnaround time on the...
Right.
Paint job, okay, I'm sorry.
Number four, $23,500 for water testing. If we had one water fountain that was brought up as an issue by a parent, and that was addressed at the Tuesday, I said, "Then all the water..." The board wanted all the water fountains tested.
Right.
And that's what it's gonna cost. I'm sure that can be finished by the end of June and paid for. Waste removal services, that's $14,500. Then, I think, I think number six, and I think number six, you might as well take off because what, what they're saying is that it appears that you're stockpiling your custodial supplies for next year.
So I wanna stockpile toilet paper.
Ma'am?
So I wanna stockpile toilet paper.
Toilet paper.
No.
'Cause I never have enough toilet paper.
But that is, what, what council said, that is carrying over into the next year's budget.
By piling toilet paper?
Stockpiling up toilet paper. It's cleaning stuff.
You're building up your supplies...
It's wax for the floors at the end of the year.
I got it, I got it. But it pairs over into 2017, 2018, 19 budget. So I'm gonna just be honest with you, this is the way I feel, after going through this Tuesday night and, and talking, unless, unless a city council member takes this off the floor, and then it's discussed, and then, 'cause we're not gonna get a chance to speak the 22nd. I said, "Mayor, how are we going to, how are we going to answer these questions? Do we have to answer them in writing?" He said, "Well, I think the best way you can do it as the chairman is that you call each city council member and explain to them." Well, I mean...
But, but then he says, "But I have the four votes."
Well, he has four votes.
So he's not gonna... All right.
But I think this is what's gonna happen. I think that, I think we'll have a, you know we'll have a council member to bring it up, get it off the floor for discussion. But they won't have any information whether or not we can have these things paid for by the end of June.
Well, how?
Unless he writes, unless he does, I mean, we've already sent a narrative, but it wasn't enough. I'm sorry, go ahead.
What I was gonna say, Mr. Parent, is that, I mean, we've gone through this enough to know...
I agree.
What they're doing, why they're doing it...
Yes, sir.
To delay it or not do it at all. But if he's made the request to call all the board, all the council members, I don't see that as a, as a good record. So I would, I would look at this information based on some of the statements that I've said, and I would think that you send them an email, so that you can put the request out there in writing, and then wait for a response. I mean, that's all you can do, to try to expedite it, because I think, yeah, just send it to all of them.
Okay.
And you can send it to all of us as well.
And copy the, copy the board members. And then let's see what happens.
Can, can I make one statement? That's not necessarily about, and I know, I know, but when it weighs on your heart, you just have to say it.
Sure, say it.
They took off categorical and quarterly funding.
Yes.
One lump sum. The issue that we need to be mindful of at this table is that this conversation is gonna need to be had with us in March and April next year, so that we are not sitting here and they pull, the money has to be sent off, and we're now in malfeasance. Because I have a fear that our definition of an encumbrance and their definition of an encumbrance, we, we beat this around the bush, it's a legal matter, and unless we're gonna be the first ones to get a definition...
Exactly.
I think that maybe we need to revisit our policy to match their policy, because they are our appropriating body. I don't know how to get...
We have the 120 days, and they have 120 days.
But we're pulling, I mean, they keep pulling Gatsby. And so my, my issue is, I just wanna stop the argument. Otherwise, we're still gonna be in a state of perpetual argument. And that's just my concern.
But I was simply gonna say that, you know, in my 30 years of working for the city, as long, and I've said this before, as long as it was encumbered, we had the PO, even if the, the goods were delivered after June 30th, as long as we'd encumbered that money, we could pay...
That is correct.
That invoice. That's, that's the policy of the city of Portsmouth.
But there's nobody that overlooks that policy of the city of Portsmouth. We have somebody that's overlooking the policy of Portsmouth Public Schools.
It's the Code of Virginia.
It is the Code of Virginia.
Based on the Code of Virginia, we are supposed to, any money that was not unspent by June 30th has to go back for reappropriation. Their definition, and we, we've done, we, the last two years, we've been dealing with this, and the bottom line, their definition is, if it's not spent, spent by June 30th, even though you have a bona fide purchase order, it's not received and it's not spent, it goes back to the...
Is that, is that how most school divisions operate?
That's how the city attorney interpreted to the...
I'm not talking about the city attorney, I'm talking about our attorney.
Well, he...
The question, is that how other school divisions operate?
Yeah.
And the answer I got from Virginia School Board Association councils, they're all over the place. They all have private deals or private arrangements with the cities, and a lot of them are really small school divisions, that is how they operate. Because you may have a council that, you know, one school. But in the larger school divisions, it's not how they operate, but it's by agreement. There's no defin, definition of this.
I, I just, I'm sorry, I just see a perpetual argument over Virginia purchasing and encumbrance, and I would like to try to find a way for us to bridge that, to end the argument.
We've been working on this the last eight years. We haven't been able to do it?
Yes. Well, and I, I agree with Ms. Hines here. It's silly to me, you got the same policy, 120 days, 120, 120 days. I think the only difference is, and maybe I'm wrong...
It's 120 days if you don't receive the purchase, then you cancel it, okay?
Right, I mean, my point is that it's the same, it's the same policy. I mean, they got 120 days, we got 120 days, correct?
Correct.
And, and maybe the only difference between the two policies is, we have the option of extending if need to, correct? Because we've done it in this room. Okay, so is, is that the difference between the policy? That may be irrelevant or so forth, but to get to your question as well, and we've bounced this off over and over and over in the encumbrance question so many times that now this is just something that it's, I understand in second nature to it, and I'm almost tired of it, because as Ms. Hines has said, this is something that, that we should be able to work out as adults in, in two governing, well, two governing bodies that's serving the public of, of citizens of Portsmouth. Okay? Now, as far as what you're saying with regards to, you're asking for our opinion with how to proceed with this. Just my opinion, I'm not so sure that that is your place to go and call every single city council member on this. The, the resolution was passed on this side, it went to their side, it's now they have a decision to make, they have decided to table, for whatever reason, that is very unfortunate. That is very unfortunate. So for you to turn around, just in my opinion, for you to turn around and then go to every single city council member, I don't know if that's under your purview, and I think that might be setting a bad precedent with that, you know, as well.
The only reason why he said that is that he is the mayor, and he speaks for council. I am the chairman, and I represent the board on matters. So it would be, and I sign, and I sign off on all documents that go to city council.
Right.
So that's why he said, "Well, you, you need, you need to get on the phone and explain this to the city council, and then on May 22nd, somebody can bring it up and we can vote on it and move on with it."
Well, and my point is, my point is, again, that's never operated like that before. I don't even know if that's protocol, procedure, or anything like that.
I don't either.
If we wanna call a meeting, then I, we've already did, put it in writing again. My next part of this whole thing is, and Ms. Hines have hit on this, and I'm just wondering, and this is more of a, an attorney question, with regards to the concept of malfeasance. Because now it was brought up, we read this, and we're short on the utility. And the bottom line is, you gotta have, you gotta have a resolution in order to move categorical...
Pay bills.
To pay that bill, utility bill. And if we're short right now, and if they never pass that resolution, then we're in arrears, which, correct? Which would then be...
Your rear's in a category, right?
Well, yeah, so malfeasance...
Not in your budget, in a category.
No, okay. So here's my question, with regards to the legal definition of malfeasance and so forth. I understand what, what malfeasance is, but what happens if a board does everything that it is legally correctly supposed to do, and it's, and it's the other side that, because of the decisions that they made, put the, us in malfeasance? For, in other words, here, here's what I'm saying. If we pass a resolution and it goes to that side, okay, we did what we were supposed to do legally. It wasn't that we were in malfeasance because of anything that we did. They choose to table it, or they choose not to vote on it. Therefore, because of their decision, we're in malfeasance. But it wasn't because of something that we did, we followed the law. So my, is that, is that still malfeasance on our side, or not? Or has anyone thought of that?
Well, no, I, I don't, it's hard for me to envision how that occurs.
Like this?
Well, theoretically, the answer, and, and let me be very clear, I'm not sure I understand what the issue is here. I'm piecing it together from this conversation, 'cause I don't, I haven't studied the resolution, I don't know what we asked school board, the city council do. The impression I get from this conversation is that we need some categorical adjustments to pay bills, and they will not agree to those categorical adjustments. So I would submit to you that you can't pay the bill.
Does that put us in malfeasance?
If you don't pay the bill, as long as you have, the, the code says you can, shall not spend or obligate to spend more money than you have or budgeted in any fiscal year. I'm sure we have not spent more money than we're budgeted in this fiscal year, and I don't think we have been obligated to spend more money than we have in this fiscal year. The question that is open in my mind is whether or not, when you're categorical funding, what is the effect of outspending your category? And I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head. But my opinion is, if you don't have money in the category, maybe you have it in this category, but not that one, and you can't get a transfer, you can't pay that bill. If you pay that bill, and then they don't approve the transfer, and that somehow takes you over your expenses or your obligated expenses in the year, then you're in malfeasance.
Okay.
So you can't pay the bill.
Can't pay it.
And then you end up with whatever the fallout is from a school division not paying a lawfully incurred bill.
To this, to the...
Dominion, Virginia.
To Dominion Power and to the city board.
Do we really wanna set a precedence that as a, as a school, as a city, that the city is gonna allow the school division not to pay a bill? Are we really setting, are we really gonna allow council to set that precedence for us to do that? I mean, that's just, I mean, enough is enough.
When you watch the tape, her response to your question just then, is that the, the school board has a budget, and they, they have budgeted their electrical, their water bill, and their gas bill, so they have enough money, council, that they can pay their bills.
But if we don't get the money, but it's snippets of a time...
But this, number one, says that we don't in that category, just because of we had a harsh winter.
Well, because they raised the storm water fees. And they raised the water fee. But there's no new money coming into the city, but everything was raised. So we budgeted based on the old amount. So the reason that we owe money is because they up their fees.
Well, but... Go ahead, Ms. Williams.
Well, do we or will we have the invoices for these bills? We should, if you all say they're due, that's how much it's gonna be.
Brittany, you got a bill, we gotta pay, but we can't pay it because...
Well, they said they will pay it if you can say that...
Right.
That you, you...
I can pay it by June 30th.
You can pay it by June 30th.
That's correct.
Utility bills come, some come weekly, some come monthly, the storm water comes quarterly. So we have to make sure we have enough money in that category to pay those bills that are coming in. If those bills are coming in throughout the year, and even in July, because you get billed for June, you know, in July, like, happens in our personal lives.
Right.
We don't have the money there to pay it, how are we gonna pay it? So we're trying to make sure that we have money there. So I don't, I can't give you an invoice...
But aren't you gonna pay the money out of your 20, 2018, 19 budget? That's what they're really saying.
Yeah, but you, would you have the money?
But you still wouldn't have the money.
And let me, let me...
If the money goes back to the city, you wouldn't have the money.
And let me add this to...
I think that's what's gonna happen.
What happens on your financial statements at the end of the year, because you have used electricity, you have an expense for electricity. You just have a payable as, as of the end of the year, because it has not been paid. So just 'cause you pay it in July, it's still an expense for June.
Right. And I, what I don't know legally, I'm not trying to get into the board's business, I'm trying to think about this legally, I don't know legally what happens the next year if, in fact, you paid that bill in July. It applies to the prior year, but then you add all the money that you're budgeted for that year, but you paid that other bill in July, would you then have paid more money in that year than you were budgeted? Because if you look at a pure cash flow, that expense in July, and assuming you spend down your full budget for 18, 19, would be on top of your 18, 19 budget money, would you now have expended more money than you were allocated in that?
I understand.
Chairman.
But didn't you?
Yes, yes, and then Ms. Williams.
Well, getting to what, with what you're saying there, hence, that's why you have an encumbrance.
That's why you carry it forward.
That's why it carries it forward, that's what's called an encumbrance.
That's correct. We all understand that, but that's not the way they understand it.
Something is wrong, because we have, working where I work, we had professionals on contract. That June 30th, they turned in their time sheets or whatever. They're paid out of that June, up until that, but they're paid in July. You can't pay them for that, until then, because they signed the contract that they worked however many hours for the month of June.
Yep.
And everybody works that way. So it's the same thing with your electric bill. If you get the bill through June 30th, you can't pay it until July. So I don't, I'm not...
But there is a difference. The difference is, the city, the city... The difference is, the city, the city has, the, I mean, they appropriate the money to the school board. In the state, in the Virginia code, there is very specific code regarding the encumbrance. It's anything that has not been encumbered by June 30th, or it's back over, unspent, has...
Spent.
That is in the Virginia code, and that's what they're holding us to. Give, you give us the money back, and I pray that they will then reappropriate that back, and then we'll, we can pay some bills.
Okay, so, they're saying that, give it back to them, and they will give it back for us to pay that.
Right. They hadn't said, they hadn't said that.
They can't.
Okay. I hope they will, but they don't.
They can't.
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, and I...
I'm not calling anybody.
Right.
Right now, I'm emailing.
No, right. And, and I don't know if this is a good idea or not, it's just an idea I'm just throwing out.
Hey, look.
If, if that's the case with regards to the, the hangup with turning the money back over at June 30th and, and, and so forth, because we're encumbrance questioning and this, that, and everything else, then I say, throw out, then I want, and I want an MOU. I want a memorandum of understanding written, and whatever you got to do to make it legalized and so forth, that all utility bills, if that's what's in question, or any other bill, okay? That comes, that comes due, that, that's a June bill that gets paid in July, I want a memorandum of understanding that, that they, that they are going to cover that. If, because, again, if we have to turn the money back over on the 30th and we don't have it...
We've been, we've, we've been going down this road a long time.
Well, you know, I think...
It's very frustrating.
I do think they are very reasonable people, that they want a fresh start of trust.
Yes. They did say that.
And then...
They did say that.
I'm trying to be positive. I think they're, I think, you know, they're reasonable enough to realize that we have to pay our utility bills.
Yes.
I do. Now, some of the other stuff, they, they, you know, they might say, well, what, what do you need these custodial things? First of all, I think they're really getting a little bit overboard in their micromanagement and stuff. But, they are the appropriating body.
Right.
So, I don't think it's reasonable for us to think that they would not give us back the money to pay the utility bills. And I believe if they did not, that I believe that the people and the media would eat them alive. I really do.
I will.
And correct me, correct me if I'm wrong, when I'm looking at the end of June 30th under the purchasing, you have to have received services by June 30, correct? So, like, the painting service would have to be done by June 30.
And paid.
And paid.
Yes, ma'am.
But, going back to the custodial and building supply, that's not services, that's just material.
And they're saying you're stockpiling for next year's, out of next year's budget.
So, I, I mean, let's, let's not trip up over $47,000, you know, I, I, it's $47,000 on 150, how many million dollar budget, correct?
Yes, 190.
Um, but, for that, but for that point too, then, construction paper, copy paper, glue sticks, scissors, bulletin board paper, ink, ink, Band-Aids, would all have to be sent back because it falls under the same idea of supply. I understand services have to be rendered and paid for by June 30, but is there a delineation in the purchasing between services and supply? Because if we're going to go down that road of, I can't stockpile toilet paper, then I can't stockpile the things I've just mentioned above. And, and I, and I know that for services, there is that delineation, but we're not talking about custodial services, we're talking about custodial supply. And that's my hangup.
Mr. Meakin.
Sir.
Would, would it do any good at this point if you could reach out to the city attorney for, in other words, he read the code? We all know the code. And, of course, this item has been taped, this item has been tabled. There is no, and according to the mayor this afternoon, there's no assurance that the item is going to be off the table. So, it could, in other words, June 30th could come and the city council would not take any action. I asked, how are, how can we present the information that you're asking when there's no opportunity for the superintendent or any of us to, to answer your questions?
Well, I don't understand. I don't...
That's what he recommended, I call everybody. Now, you're saying, y'all are saying, well, send an email. I do know, I hope, I, I mean, we do know that there is a, a council member that is going to take it off the table.
Does he need a second?
Yes.
Yeah, well, I think you'll get a, I think you'll get a second.
But, I, I don't, if you, if all, and see, all of these things matured timely, and we paid them this year, we would still be within our budget.
Yes.
Yes.
All right. So, we don't run a risk of exceeding our budget this year.
No.
We don't, we do run a risk of exceeding categories in our budget.
Right. But, not the budget.
But, not the budget.
But, it's the budget.
Okay.
And the reason we have this money is because of these vacant positions.
Yeah, I understand, I understand that they're, well, first of all, nobody can budget to the dollar.
Right.
And secondly, anybody that is faced with criminal liability for exceeding your budget would be foolish to try to budget to the dollar. Let's be, let's be realistic about that.
Amen.
Because exigencies occur every year, things that you don't count on, school bus accidents, whatever, that would affect your ability to meet your obligation. So, the idea that you're supposed to fund a budget and then fund to the penny is, is not sound. That is not logical. So, putting that aside, what we're, what the issue we're dealing with is, is the city is refusing to transfer funds per category. But, if, if they don't, if these services get done but don't get paid, the net result is, whatever money we have will revert to the school division under their, I mean, to the city under their theory.
Mm-hmm.
And so, July 1, if it's $3 million or $50,000, that becomes city money.
Yep.
And then, the only way you can pay those bills is to have them reallocated...
That's correct.
Or, reappropriate, is the appropriate word, reappropriate, or pay them out of 2019 budget, which is not dollars budgeted for 2019 because they were 2018 budget expenses.
That is correct.
Okay.
That's correct. All right. You, you nailed it on the head.
Okay, it's time to wrap this thing up.
Okay. We just wanted you to be aware, now, the 22nd, I don't know if y'all want to, if there's any interest of going to the...
Well, I, I thought also in the meeting somewhere, Councilman Moody said that in a couple of weeks, they wanted to hear Dr. Porcy.
But, according to Mayor Rowe...
I mean, was that said?
Well, he's, it was said.
Okay.
But, Mayor Rowe said...
No action.
There was no action taken.
Right.
On, on what, Moody said?
On what he said.
On what he said, there was no action. But, he did say it, but there was no action.
Can I ask one more budget question?
You can ask.
City code, city code, city charter, city code, says that they do reappropriate to us, correct? They keep 1/4th and we get 3/4 back?
I don't think that's in the code.
Oh, that was...
Was that a resolution that's not written?